We got enough, we got it.
Oh, thank you.
All right. We're going to get started with the second portion here of our work session. And this is actually a perfect segue from our FPAC discussion, I think. As I hope we're going to look to the work that FPAC has done with boundaries and let some of that advise us as we work towards the future and having some of these conversations going forward. We are, the subject of this work session is the proposed scope amendment to the Glen Forest Elementary School Boundary Study. The school board discussed the proposed scope of boundary adjustments at the work session on May 13th, 2019. Glen Forest Elementary School was included in the discussion for a boundary adjustment, and the school board provided concurrence on a scope to include the following elementary schools: Bailey's Elementary School, Bailey's Upper Elementary School, Glen Forest Elementary School, and Park Lawn Elementary School. A boundary scope meeting was held with the community on June 10th, 2019, to further inform the Glen Forest Elementary School Boundary Study. As a result of community feedback and in accordance with the school board regulation 8130.9 on local school boundaries, program assignments, and school closings, an amendment to the scope of study is being presented to the school board for approval. The amendment to the scope will allow staff to develop possible options based on input gathered for presentation to the community at a boundary study meeting. The boundary study meeting with the community will gather feedback on the options presented, and staff will make a recommendation to the school board. The school board will schedule a public hearing before taking action on the recommendation to adjust the boundary. Because this is my colleague Dr. Anderson's district, and I know that she has been in close collaboration with the community and also with our Office of Facilities and planning on this, I would like to turn it over to her.
Okay, thank you. As I've discussed with all of you before, Glen Forest is a school that currently houses almost 1,100 students. As an elementary school, that is a very difficult size to maintain. There was a community meeting that was held on June 10th, 2019, to discuss the former boundary scope, well, rather, the current boundary scope, which includes Bailey's and Bailey's Upper. And as you know, Bailey's Lower only houses K to 2, and Bailey's Upper is 3 to 5, so they're kind of one entity. And Glen Forest and Park Lawn. At this time, the community feedback from that meeting, based also on community feedback that I have incurred, that I have called, since I have been on the school board starting in January, we are needing to include additional sites to be reviewed during this boundary study. So this work session, as Lord Jane shared, is to amend the scope of the Glen Forest Boundary Study to include other Justice Pyramid Schools, including Beechtree, Belvedere, and Sleepy Hollow to the scope. The main purpose of this work session is to obtain concurrence from the whole board and to include those additional sites.
Are there any questions that anyone has? Same process we're going to follow from the last part is please dip your, Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, thank you for bringing this forward. Would you elaborate a little bit on the rationale for broadening everything out? I assume part of this is wanting to make sure that everybody's at the table for the conversation, so that people don't feel like they're being singled out for one reason or another.
All of that is definitely true, but I'll also add one more point before we turn it over to staff to kind of fill that out. Right now Glen Forest is a building that has 17 modulators and 12 trailers. The conversation that has been on the table is to move students towards Bailey's Elementary, which also has 10 modulators and four trailers, and is ranging from being at 115% overcapacity to 113% capacity over the next five years. Park Lawn is a similar school, is also a school that has 10 modulators and seven trailers, also ranging from 99% capacity to 100% capacity over the same five-year period. Not including some of these other spaces, including Beechtree, which right now has no modulators, no trailers, and ranges from 77% capacity to 83% capacity is definitely an issue, because the space does exist there. Similarly with Belvedere and Sleepy Hollow Elementary Schools, there is space at those sites that is not going to be sufficient to move what we're looking at, 300 students, in order to right-size Glen Forest. So there just needs to be more space for the staff to think more broadly in terms of how to best serve our students without moving the problem. Jeff, Jessica?
Well, Dr. Anderson, you said it perfectly, really. The only thing I would add, really, is if you take a look at the initial meetings that we had with the community, a lot of the feedback, much like we've experienced in some others, is why don't you take a look at the entire high school pyramid? And when you take a look at this, this does now, if this is adopted in concurrence with the board and direction for staff, it allows us to have those conversations with the entire Justice Pyramid, with the exception of some of the students at Mason Crest that do split into Falls Church. So it really does provide for that conversation. As was alluded to by Dr. Anderson, it's pretty obvious to us, as the ones that would not be, you know, would not be a contributing school, it would be more of a receiving school. But to have those conversations with those communities, I think, I think it warrants, it will cover a lot of the information that, and the expanding growth that you've talked about.
Do any of my, oh, I see Chair Corbett Sanders.
I'll be brief. Do you have a sense of the timing for this? When you would do, go out to the community, given this broader scope, do you see yourself going out to the community in more than one meeting? And the phasing in of something, of whatever you choose to do?
That's a great question. The way staff views it, really, is if we get the concurrence for that broader discussion, certainly because of the feedback that we received from the meetings that we did have, we do have a lot of different elements to already start taking a look at, but we'd be able to come back with you with an exact schedule. We have had preliminary conversations about if we were to get this, so that we could be prepared to respond to this. And we were looking at more regional meetings like Glasgow or something like that, in order to have a large catchment area for community input and feedback.
We have some tentative dates as well in that discussion, if this were to be, receive the concurrence that we're asking for today.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I also will try to be brief. Just a quick question. In terms of your scoping, are you considering shifting multiple schools, or is it just kind of broadening the scope of things? I'm just kind of curious what you're looking at in terms of the thought.
Potential does exist for that. Again, it was a result of the feedback, and a lot of the stuff that we received from the community is, you know, we need to take a look at this entire area, this entire region, really the entire pyramid, because of where we have space available and where we don't have space available, at the elementary level.
The idea is really a more holistic view of the pyramid, to make sure you balance things across the pyramid. And as you say, the community is talking about this.
That was the feedback that we got, and certainly from Dr. Anderson, from what she has articulated, that she's heard from her constituents, yeah.
I also attended the last, the last meeting that was on this topic in June. I was actually just a member, because Sandy Evans was still in the seat. And that was a conversation that was also being shared then, so it wasn't news that I heard this moving forward in this new role.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate that. And that was just my question, is kind of, and a holistic view makes sense to me in terms of looking at all of our schools within a pyramid to make sure things are balanced and equitable. So thank you.
I have Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, and then Ms. Bukarski.
I thought Ms. Bukarski was before me, but, okay. So I actually don't have any objection to this. I just would like to make sure that we map out clearly what the communication will be with the community as we go forward. And I, I don't remember the exact steps, but I also would like to make sure that whatever that process is, and wherever the opportunities will be, that we do a lot of outreach to make sure that people know ahead of time what that will be, right? Exactly what you're asking, and where they will have an opportunity to participate, and what each of these steps will mean, so that it's not a surprise at the end, right? So as much front-loading information is what I would like to see.
Tolan?
Just very quickly, I'm curious, are you hoping to do this by fall? Have the actual move of students by fall?
The community really has been waiting for relief at Glen Forest for so long. So that would be the goal, to do it in the fall. Even in my community hours just last week on Valentine's Day, this was the question of a lot of the folks who came to, to meet with me. Is it, when is this going to happen? When are we going to have relief? Not just from Glen Forest's parents, but also from the other schools who are waiting to receive students as well.
If I might add to that, generally, to the point that Ms. Keys-Gamara made, and also what Dr. Anderson stated, when we go back out to the community, and we will work with the Office of Community Regulations, OCCR, to make sure that we do have that articulation and that advance notice. But generally, the resultant effect is when we broaden it and have those deeper conversations, our scoping process, once we get this concurrence, as you recall, we go out, we get feedback, we come back with what we heard, we prepare scenarios and options that we then take back to the community. That transparent process has resulted in the community's desire, and letting the elected officials, in fact, this whole body in attendance, know exactly the timeline that they are willing to bear, and are, and therefore, some of the subsequent, what they call grandfathering of students, does come out. So, you know, to say a desire may be this, I would just caution that the process usually informs the timing of that, and I would just throw that out there.
Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. So my comments were along the lines of what Ms. Keys-Gamara was saying, the outreach to the community, and making sure we give many opportunities for people to comment, reach out to the PTAs. And just for my own clarification, there are schools on here now where this conversation has never happened with parents, right? I, I would just hope that we, we take extra care talking to those communities, especially if the goal is to do this by next year, because that's a pretty short timeline. And talking, you said, I guess, schools have principals know that this may be coming. I don't know if somebody could talk about that, but, you know, it's a short time period.
Dr. Braybrand?
If I could, you know, we're just beginning, and this is the process, and it's... I'm not ready to commit our staff to say that we can make a boundary change that would impact next year. I know that would be what perhaps a board member would want, or some of the board would want. We have to go out, hear the community, and look at what would be proposed after we do this pyramid-wide look. That, I really do think the pyramid-wide look is a great idea, before trying to balance between two schools, and then there's here three or four others. So this is trying to come up with a longer-term solution, and I don't want to rush what would be a good solution. If we can do it sooner, we would obviously try to do it sooner. But what I heard Karen Keys, Ms. Keys-Gamara say, and I agree, we've got to make sure we're bringing our community along as we're doing a process like this. As this board knows, boundary, all things boundary have been more divisive than inclusive. And I believe this is a board that is standing for inclusivity and equity, and it to be done with good communication, and we're going to do everything we can to model that moving forward with an eye to urgency, but also an eye to making sure we get it right as we do it.
I appreciate that. I mean, I do like the fact we're looking at this more holistically, so thank you. I think that is absolutely the way we should be looking at boundaries. But I do caution, you know, doing it right is more important than doing it fast, I think. So I look forward to, you know, seeing where this takes us, so thank you.
I have Ms., oh, I have Ms. Darnett-Cofax, and then I have Ms. McLaughlin, and then me, and then I see a go-back from Ms. Sizemore-Hizer.
Thank you. I also like the idea of doing it more comprehensively, particularly since the two schools we were originally looking at were, you know, equally crowded. But a couple things, Dr. Braybrand, I'd like you to speak to, so the public understands, because we did have a pause on administrative boundary changes. We, and I'd like you to explain why this may be different. And also, I completely agree, I think, I've been through boundary processes, you know, even, even just moving, I can't imagine having, you're talking 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 schools looking at, and, and having community meetings and getting feedback. It's already March, I don't know. I know relief is necessary, but I think we have to be really realistic in thinking that this could happen by the fall. But if you would please address the question about how this is different than administrative boundary changes, and why this is happening for the public.
Of course, Dr. B.
Just a couple of quick things. You may remember Glen Forest was actually one of those that was on the CIP approved by the board like a year before. So this one has been ongoing work. We did kind of take a pause to do anything new at the time. The previous board said, well, let's pause. We had the boundary policy being debated, and there was some consternation in the community, and we agreed to get a consultant. But this one was already in the works, but just at a smaller scale. So this is simply going back, we've listened to the community, and going back and getting a broader scoping, and the regulation requires us to come back to you to do that, and then to do the community engagement, to make sure, really, what you just encapsulated so well. If one, if we've taken a look, and both schools are overcrowded, then how are we really going to be able to solve the problem, unless we're moving the problem from one school to the next school? And then in another year, a board member is going to hear complaints from that school about being way overcrowded. Again, I want to respect all board members, and I'm not, not, today I'm going to say it would be a very aggressive timeline to be able to do it for this fall. I'm not going to make a definitive statement today. It's more important, and my belief in working with you all, that we do whatever we're doing with boundaries right, rather than rushed. And that remains my, my feeling moving forward. And I hope that's helpful. This, this was one that had been previously before the board.
Absolutely, thank you. I just want people to understand that, those who may be watching this tape, because there'll be some that get things, some people who may get confused about why we're moving forward on this issue.
And, and if, if I may add, as for the community who may be watching, by expanding the scope, it's not saying that we're going to make changes at all of these schools, it's that we are looking at all of these schools and including them in the scope for possible options that we have listed in the CIP from A all the way to H. But we want to make sure that the community understands that by including them in the study, it by no means would be saying that something would be happening at that school. It's only to engage the community and involve them in what the process could be, and what the, the possible outcome could be.
I have Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. While this isn't in my magisterial district, this is fascinating to see another area in the county, when you look at all of the elementary schools, that back when Fairfax County was first being developed, and you just had this explosion of suburban communities, and so you had an explosion of elementary schools that are all a stone's throw away from one another. So the contiguous boundaries that they all have are so intertwined, like a Rubik's Cube, you really can't make one turn at one school and not necessarily affect some of the other ones. The one question I have is, and this is just more curiosity for me to understand our district as a whole, but when you look at Beechtree's boundaries, which you can't see on the screen, but if you look on your colored map, I mean, there's a whole nother section on the opposite side of Sleepy Hollow that's, I mean, if that's ever an island, I mean, so... And then, and then you, you look at what's, of course, what Glen Forest is dealing with right now, which is such a unique shape, I, I'm kind of thinking, maybe Italy in the boot? You know, it's just, so it's, I think that we owe it to the community to be looking at all of these together, because so much has changed over time, and traffic patterns and everything. So I'm very supportive of whatever we can do here. And I, I personally know the principal at Glen Forest Elementary. Her sons grew up with mine, and she's one of our most dedicated principals. And in talking to Ms. Evans, and, and now I'm so pleased that Dr. Anderson's bringing an equally strong voice to this, this is long overdue. So if anyone in the community wants any reassurances of why, I think we've offered to them a free tour to see what Glen Forest is dealing with right now in terms of its size and overcrowded space. But Ms. Darnett-Cofax, that was a really good question to bring up in this work session. There will be some people who say, hey, wait a minute here. But the bottom line is, this was something that we've already been trying to work with, and then, Dr. Braybrand, you said it best. You do it well, you don't do it fast. And this is impacting communities. So I, I just had to say something, because I'm just marveling at some of these boundaries. I thought some of mine in Braddock were perplexing, but this is quite interesting.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. When I first looked at this map, and I think I had a similar conversation with Ms. Omech, where I, we were on the phone, I couldn't describe it enough. I said, you need to see this on paper, because that, I think they call it the duck head, is it? It, it's incredible in terms of how unconnected that part of the school is to the school community. And you'll have a similar issue that's happening with Bailey's Upper and Lower. If you look at that, those are two different colors altogether. Bailey's Upper is in a boundary area of a totally different school. How these things came to be, you know, I'm sure there's a long history, but I think you're definitely right in terms of, we need to address this, and to be sure that we are providing our families and our students with the most comprehensive view and the best opportunity for education possible. Having said that, there's one more thing that I do want to add. I agree with Dr. Braybrand, thank you for that. We do want to get this right. We do want to have a good plan for our parents, so that everyone is comfortable. But I do want to say, the sense, the sense of urgency for that school, it's real. Even some things as simple as, the staff at Glen Forest, they do not have anywhere to park. Their parking lot is not even, it's, even after this boundary situation is taken care of, if it is, they will still continue to have parking issues. You can only imagine how much more their parking situation has, in exact words, has been aggravated by the number of kids whom they have to service. We have staff who are getting tickets, because they have to park in the street each and every day. So there is a real sense of urgency in terms of addressing some of those issues for them. So, thank you so much, Ms. McLaughlin, for sharing that.
I just had a couple of comments. One, I, I hope that we're going to use FPAC when we talk about getting some help with community outreach, and using them to help us engage and get the message out, maybe, to some people who we aren't normally able to engage in other ways. The other just thing I wanted to mention is to please make sure that we're doing inclusive outreach. I know this is a very diverse community, so I hope that we'll make sure that we provide translators, that we reach out in multiple languages, and that we make sure we use the PTAs and all of the good avenues that we have to, to make sure that we're hearing the voices of everybody in our community. I do have a couple of go-backs. I have, first, Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, and then I have Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then I have Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you very much. And again, I really do appreciate the holistic look at this, and Beechtree caught my eye as well as the, the comment I had when we were talking about doing this in the fall was, one, around the communication, but also in terms of our principals, in terms of staffing. I'm sure a lot of them are already trying to figure out their staffing levels and what they may need in their building. So that's just, I defer to the school system, if you think you can do it, you know, by fall, then I, I support it. But I do want to just throw out, I'd be concerned about making sure we have appropriate staffing levels and all these things by the fall. That's my only comment, but thank you for the holistic view, I appreciate it.
I have Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay. I just want to follow up on Ms. Darnett-Cofax's comment, because I assure you that the fact that we didn't say it explicitly, someone will come and say they're doing administrative boundary changes. This is not an administrative boundary change. I just want to say that in a whole sentence, because we are, we are quite likely to hear that, and this is not an administrative boundary change. And then the other thing is, irrespective of what the timeline ends up looking like, I'd like to know how quickly we can get notice out to the entire community, because you do want to consider all those things, whether it's staffing, whether it's family members feeling like, okay, what is this going to look like? So, you know, I, I would, I'm one board member who would like to, if we make this decision, I'd like to see something, at, at a minimum, going out that we've made this decision, and that there will be follow-up steps right away. So, Dr. Braybrand, I don't know how quickly that can happen, but even if we're not pointing out what the timeline will be, it's simply, we want to get this information to the community as quickly as possible, and then there will be information following up, I think is important.
So we can certainly do that. Whenever we start one of these processes, we send communications out through each school individually, as well as put information on our websites, direct information out. So we can make, whatever the, the board decides to do this evening, we can make our communities aware. We also, we have gone to this community in the past, and so we do provide translators and do provide services for parents, that they understand and can understand when they're at the meeting. And, and with this, we want to be cognizant of the timing of the year, and knowing that we have spring break that's coming up in April, and trying to figure out when we would best plan this. So based on the discussions this evening, we would be coming back and making the board aware of what that scoping would look like, and then be reaching out to the communities to let them know initially, and then let them know that more information would be coming.
I would just say, Ms. Keys-Gamara, one thing I'll be sure to do is to communicate with you either directly from me or in the Braybrand briefing, periodic updates of where we are around this process, so that the board stays in loop, all board members stay in the loop of, of what we're doing. And many of you know, but I sent, I think it's good, and Ms. Darnett-Cofax was helpful, as folks remember, we have worked, and we have secured an outside consultant that's helping us around boundary policy, and engagement around what the policy, the community engagement piece of the policy. And we hope to have something done in May, hopefully, to bring those, those findings to you all, to help shape future work that we do around our boundary policy and our boundary work. And as this board's already said, boundary, boundaries are one tool of many that we would use in our capital improvement process to deal with capacity issues. And I know this board, I'm confident this board, and I want you to know, I will do everything I can to make sure the community is brought in clearly, and the facts are shared. And when there's misrepresentation of facts, I will aggressively respond and communicate to the community what this board is doing, and directing me to do and what it is not doing. And what we have today is simply the, the, the staff bringing to the board, involving the Magisterial Chair, saying, we need to look at a solution that at least, as we're looking at solutions, has a pyramid-wide view, and not just two schools that are already both overcrowded. And passing the problem from one school to another is not a solution that anybody can support. So we need to, you know, we need to go out and see what we can find. There may not be easy answers, but we need to take a look and bring you the best solution that we think is possible, and then let the board be the final deciders with transparency and inclusiveness. And we plan to do that.
And then my final comment has to do with messaging during this time period. I would like for us to be very circumspect, very careful about how we communicate the rationale for this. One, clearly it's not, I'm going to say it again, because I know somebody didn't hear it, this is not an administrative boundary change. However, what is exactly prompting it, right? And, and what are we going to consider? I mean, just looking at this map, walkability might be relevant. But I think with the, with staff, Dr. Anderson, and as well as your at-large board members, we want to talk about messaging, and then perhaps allow the board to talk about whether that's appropriate. But I don't, what I do not want to get into is this kind of back-and-forth ping-pong message, and then other people are making that. I don't want to leave a void at all. I want us to make a determination as to what is our message about this, and communicate it clearly.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Any other comments before we... Any other comments before we move on? All right. Then may I please get a show of hands of who can support the proposed scope amendment to the Glen Forest Elementary School Boundary Study? That's unanimous with Ms. Maron absent. Thank you. So now we can, staff can move forward, and we'll be looking forward to hearing the next steps.
Thank you to Mr. Plattenberg and Ms. Gillis for your work on this, it has just begun. Enjoy.
All right, I know it's hard to believe. But we are done, so meeting is adjourned.